Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hold that one down yet.
Right, the red light is go, yellow light goes to the top.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and number two is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is the attendance. All board members are present except Gina Jacobson. Number four, approval of the agenda items.
Still moved, second.
A motion by Jen, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, committee reports, the advisory committees. Do we have a high school student rep here?
No.
Okay. No representative from the high school here today, so we'll go to the elementary school.
We met on April 7th, and first we reviewed Family Fun Night. That was back in March. Attendance was high, very high, but manageable. They combined with the PTO Bingo Night. And the NHS kids did an awesome job volunteering, and we discussed potentially combining with Battle of the Books next year. Math Masters and Battle of the Books. So John Clipnis gave a review of Rena Hartley, who leads the Math Masters program. Kids compete as individuals and then as teams of five and six. Battle of the Books is where each grade forms a team, and each grade reads a set of books, and then they're asked a set of questions about the books, and they can win a prize. MCA testing occurred April 8th through, I guess some have it still this week, through May 1st. So as we all know, but just to review, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, the MCAs are state tests that measure how well students are reading grade level standards, meeting grade level standards in reading, math, and science. The school gets official results in August, and we talked about how while the MCAs provide helpful data, they're just one snapshot of a student's progress. They don't reflect all the ways, all the important ways that kids grow, and of course, we're committed to supporting the whole child. We talked about the after-school tutoring program. A community member volunteered to tutor elementary-age students after school on Mondays, and that person's actually me. I'm helping, we're starting really small, and I'm helping a third grader right now in math skills. And it's been wonderful so far to connect with her and just give her extra help every week. So we're just going to see how that goes and assess if that's something we want to keep doing, or grow it, or what have you. There is not going to be a back-to-school day in August. There wasn't one last August either, but we talked about how that worked really well, and each teacher just kind of has their open house that last week of August. Talked about the Literacy and Read Act again. The teachers that were on the rabbit track, the quicker track, they finished before Christmas break. The other track is done the beginning of May, and they talked about, some of the teachers shared the benefits of that program translating to the classroom. Talked about fourth grade sale, end of May, lots of field trips happening in May, all different grade levels, and then Fun and Fitness Day is also the end of May. And then gave a staffing update and kind of a look to the next school year. And also, John Clipnis talked about the additional 160,000 in additional funds that has been raised from the community, which is amazing. Talked about how decisions of how to use that money would be discussed in early May. Talked about potentially adding a fifth grade section back since that got cut last year. Would love to, kind of the wish list, would love to bring back High Potential Program, potentially more title staff and more office staff. Talked about the importance of communicating the need with our community of passing a levy and adequately funding the district. And then lastly, we discussed increasing the funding through the operating levy is critical to fulfilling our mission as a school, which is to empower learning experiences that inspire all to grow and achieve, and without those necessary resources, we risk falling short of giving our students the opportunities they need to be successful. That was, that was it. It was just a really great discussion, and there was probably 20 people in the room, so it was great to have a lot of great collaborative discussions happening. And we'll meet again in the fall.
Middle school?
We met tonight. It was my first time attending, and there wasn't very many people there. I don't know how many people typically go, but I think because of the storm, people were a little nervous to go outside. It was a short meeting. We talked about the fifth grade transition to the middle school. Moving to the middle school will take place on May 5th. One change this year is that the students are going to do the tour of the school during the day, rather than in the evening. Talked about the registration process. Sounds like there was a lot of new, new changes, or many changes to that. The process has changed, the schedule's changed. Jen gave a nice shout-out to Trina Masley for her hard work on that. Jen pointed out that they didn't get very many questions from parents, which means that it was communicated very well. Then it was mostly talking about things, end-of-year stuff, and then looking towards next year. So the open house for next year will be August 27th from 3:00 to 7:00. And then we just talked about all the different field trips. There's an eighth-grade service learning day. This Friday is the eighth-grade dance. Eighth grade's going to Valley Fair. Sixth grade's going to Mill City and the State Capitol, and the seventh graders are going to the Twins game. Yeah, just wrapping up the year with lots of exciting things and looking forward to next year.
Is there a high school meeting? Or is that Gina? Okay. Charlie, did you have a high school advisory committee meeting? Gina isn't here. I don't know if there's anything you want to update. Okay, so just updated programming and planning for next year. Okay. All right, thank you. The activities? Is that Gina?
No.
Community Ed?
We will meet again on May 19th, but I just wanted to note that the summer catalogs were mailed late March to district members, and summer registration is now open, rocking and rolling with that. And one of the goals in our district strategic plan is to research best practices in programming and curriculum for early childhood through 12th grade, and it's really encouraging to see such a wide variety in offerings from community ed. For example, there's several robotics opportunities, 3D printing, video production, in addition to many, many other youth enrichment and recreation-type opportunities. So it's great to see.
Wright Tech?
Yes, we met on April 1st. Just kind of talking about some year-end activities that are coming up. The tours being one of them. They, all of our eight-member districts have toured, with the exception of Buffalo, which will have the middle school tour on May 5th, and that will conclude the tours for the year. Anandale ninth graders did tour on the 10th of April. And then we continue to focus on just the registration for next year. And then because of the eight-member districts, you can imagine how challenging it can be with all the different spring breaks. So that did delay the numbers coming in, and so they had given a little bit more lead time on that. So I should have a more update on the specific numbers and how many they were able to pull off the waitlist at that time, now that the finals will be in there. And we continue to have more applicants for the construction management program. So we received a fourth application. They had offered it at that time of the meeting. I have not seen an update, so I'm hoping that there's even more exciting news come next week for our next meeting, that we have fulfilled that. We continue to find challenges in finding a math teacher, so if you know of anyone, we do have that opening available. And then scholarships were due last Monday, and we offer three scholarships at Wright Tech and Wright Academy. Wright Hennepin Co-op Electric Association offers a $1,500 scholarship that we award. Route 55 Corvette Cruisers gives a $500 scholarship, and the Buffalo Rotary gives two $500 scholarships. So we're very excited about that and should have some updates on the winners or that have received those. Just some program highlights. Cosmetology Skills had their USA competition on the 5th of April, so it was going to be shortly after the meeting, and they're exploring, starting some additional opportunities for that program as well. And then students are preparing for their insurances after spring break for health science, or I'm sorry, early childhood education. And then Health Science had a state competition the March 30th to April 1st, and at that time, we just didn't have any updates for how that went, but it sounded like the involvement from our students was really good. And then the heavy equipment operating machinery, they had some industry tours at the local 49ers where they were able to do an entrance test for apprenticeship in heavy equipment. So that's a great opportunity and can open great doors for our students looking to go into that field. And then had some hands-on training at MinDOT in Golden Valley. As far as enrollment, we are, at that time, at 83 students for our day school. High school, 76 students, and then two new students were starting April 7th with referrals at that time. So I would expect next week that we would have had all of those brought in for interviews and gone through the process to get started. And then middle-level, seven students. So we are getting closer to that 10, which is that preferred number, just to kind of even out financially for, for that program which we are required to offer, a mid-level ALC. So night school, they do have member school credit recovery Wednesday nights, 3:30 to 5:30, and at that time, they had eight students, so they were looking at transitioning to independent study for that. And then Wright Academy, Monday nights from 2:40 to 4:00, and that was 18 students. So quite a, quite a big number of, of need there. And let's see, and of course, Brian is kind of wrapping up and really working well with the new executive director that will begin July 1st, Brian Nutter. But he's been coming to Wright Tech on some different days, and I know he's met or sat in with a superintendent's meeting, so it's really nice to see his involvement ahead of July 1. So we're very excited about him coming on and the different ideas and just the opportunities.
Yeah, thank you. One thing we will do with the new executive directors, have him join one of our board meetings, and so you all can meet him. We did that with Brian too a few years back, and that seems to be something that was really nice, just to have him come here and experience what it's like in Anandale, meet all of you. So, thank you, Jen.
Yeah, absolutely. And another thing that we've discussed at the hiring process was just kind of more of an onboarding, and maybe the superintendents have talked about this, but Brian Kowzlawski has done a great, a great thing about really bringing the awareness of the importance of having that connection with the superintendents and having that connection with the member districts, in addition to, say, email updates or the board representation for each of those member districts. So looking at making sure that that support is there for the new incoming executive director and just a little bit different onboarding, and one of those being a regular kind of rotation maybe within each of the member districts, just understanding that, so you can understand where each of the students are coming from. And otherwise, like I said, we'll have another meeting next Tuesday, and that's it.
Gina's not here to do the Masico report, so she'll update us next month. Number six is community comments and concerns, and Hannah Fisher.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Fisher, and I'm here today on behalf of the Cardinals Rising Group. Cardinals Rising includes myself, Emily Combs, Crystal Nutt, Alyssa Damagala, and Jessica Bruggeman. Since the last board meeting, a lot has occurred. Thanks to the incredible generosity of our community, we have fulfilled all 57 matches for the 876 match opportunity from our anonymous donors, raising just over $100,000. We are proud to share that the robotics program was also fully funded, securing $30,000 to sustain it for the 2025-2026 school year. In total, Cardinals Rising has now raised $260,465. On May 1st, our fundraising efforts will conclude. We look forward to hearing how the district plans to allocate these funds to best support students and staff. We remain deeply grateful to everyone who has helped save jobs and programs through their financial support and also just sharing our message on Facebook. From the beginning, we understood this wasn't a long-term solution, but many saw the immediate need and stepped up in a very meaningful way. School funding challenges are being felt across Minnesota, but here in Anandale, something different is very, is, something different is happening. Every donation, conversation, and word of encouragement has reflected how deeply this community cares about its schools. Over the past few months, we made it a priority to listen at township meetings, the Anandale Improvement Club, the Lions Club, the Business Exmo, and many, many more meetings. The message has been very clear. There is a strong support for our schools, and many are very eager to learn more about what lies ahead for the school district. At some point, the district will need to consider another operating levy. As parents, business owners, and citizens, we want to see it succeed for the strength of our schools and the future of our community. We also recognize that success doesn't happen by accident. It requires time, early engagement, and clear, consistent communication. The community is eager to understand the needs, ask questions, gain clarity on the potential consequences if the next levy does not pass, and see that a strong plan is in place. It is never too early to dream big and set goals for the future. Tonight, we respectfully ask the board to support the development of a thoughtful, phased communication plan that begins now, one that informs, asks questions, engages, and builds momentum leading up to when the next vote might be. Anandale is full of people who want to help. Many of us stand ready to advocate, support, and work alongside you. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to our students and our community's future.
All right, thanks, Hannah. Onto number seven, the consent agenda. Motion by Jen, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, unfinished business. 8A enrollment projections for 24-25, along with 8B is the district enrollment summary, which we review every month.
Yeah, you'll notice that the, the trend seems to be continuing a little bit longer than we had hoped as far as we are still losing some students, and it, it is for the same reasons that we have been. You'll notice that the majority of these are at the high school level. If you look at the elementary, if you look at the first week, we had 894. Actually, we're up to 899 in the elementary. But the high school one certainly has dipped, and middle school has dipped a little bit too, but, and I just want to, want to say too that this is something that is certainly not just happening here in Anandale, but it's something that I feel like we have a, we have a very good solution for this, I feel like, you know, with the work that Charlie and Joy and the high school staff has been doing over there. So I think we're all eager to see how that's going to pan out here over the next bit of time. So I just want to thank Charlie and Joy for their, their efforts and the high school staff over there and their, when, when we see a, a problem and we're actually trying to come up with a solution, and a solution I think is going to be unique to us and something that is going to be really, really good for our kids, which is the number one reason we're here, so.
Okay, I agree. It will be very interesting to see what, what it looks like next year when we keep continuing this and on our new path of the ALP. Moving to number nine, new business. 9A is the robotics update.
So as Hannah just mentioned, Cardinal Rising was able to raise $30,000 to So as Hannah just mentioned, Cardinal Rising was able to raise $30,000 to save the robotics program for next year, so we're happy to see that program saved for another year.
One more comment with the robotics. I just wanted to again say thank you to Cardinals Rising for doing that and the generosity of the match and all the people that stepped up, not just for that, but with everything. And this is the last board meeting that we will have before the end of your campaign on May 1st. And I know I can speak for, I'll let Katie speak for the board, but I can speak for myself and on behalf of the school district and the staff, students. We just want to thank them for stepping up and helping our district in a very tough time. This has gained a lot of attention and one of the, in a very good way. And one thing that I have learned, I've had different colleagues from different school districts reach out to me saying, you know, can you connect me with these people? We're going through some tough times now too, and I just want to see, gain any knowledge I can from them to see what we can do in our community here. And I tell them, this was grassroots, they started this whole thing, and we couldn't be more happy though, so I really appreciate that. I think that between the couple of times the TV did something on, I think it was a couple of different channels, did little stories on the group, and then a couple of weeks ago, when the Star Tribune did the larger article, it just, it speaks a lot about this community and the commitment they have to help our students. And again, that's what this is all about. So on behalf of the school district and everybody in it, I just want to say thank you for your work.
I don't really have much to add. I just think it'll be very interesting to see if other communities have these grassroots efforts such as this in the future, so that will be kind of interesting. But yes, we thank you for all that you have done, and I think it does just prove, yes, we had an operating levy that didn't pass, but we know that we have very, very supportive people in our district and people who are willing to step in and step up in those efforts, no matter what they are, right? If it's Cardinals Rising or some other effort, like we always have people that step up and do things and are willing to kind of advocate for our kids, and we, as a board, I'll speak for all of us, we do appreciate that also. So thank you. And the kids, I mean, it's all about kids, it's not us. It's about the kids getting opportunities that they so deserve also.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment too, because one of the other things that Cardinal Rising has said from the, right from the get-go, number one, that this is, they understand that this is kind of a Band-Aid for us, but the bigger and maybe longer lasting effect is going to be at the help they can give us with our levy. And so to that end, you will be hearing, the community will be hearing very, very soon about what that plan looks like. Obviously, we have been working on this behind the scenes, but we're going to, we'll talk a little bit more about this in the coming weeks here, about what that looks like, the, and the dollar round and everything else that we're planning on. Possibly, the board will have to make a decision on whether or not they want to go out again in November, but we're gathering all of the information for them to best make that decision at this time.
Okay, we'll move on to 9B, which is the Dristy Field update at the rec park, and we have Tiffany Groob here.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. So I'm just going to give an update in regards to Dristy Field. As we know, this is a joint powers project, the Anandale Rec Park is, between the city of Anandale and Anandale Public Schools. So there's just been some conversation, and I think it's good just to come to the forefront here and have this conversation with you in regards to kind of what's going on with Dristy. So as you can see here on the PowerPoint, there's an invasive fescue that had taken over the grass in May of 2024. You can see it's dead around, it's patchy. It does not look great nor healthy. So in the next slide, you'll see, I did do some little research here, and so we've consulted with Bolton and Mink, they are consultants, they were the engineers for the project back in 2017. So within this slide, on the next slide, you're going to see that there is some grass specs that we have down at the rec park. So on the next slide, all right, so the red pictures on the pinwheel and Dristy show that this is a Big Nine seed. The Big Nine is considered, it's a Kentucky bluegrass, 60%, and it's a perennial rye grass. And this is a typical athletic blend, designed for durability, quick recovery, strong color. It's all across many schools in Minnesota. Our pinwheel is very healthy. If you've played softball or baseball over there, you'll notice that the grass is actually very good, and we have no trouble with it. But when you move over to the Dristy Field, you'll notice that there is this invasive grass. So the blue on the utility fields highlights this tough turf. Tough turf is an 85% tall fescue and a 15% bluegrass. It was a University of Minnesota turf program that was created pretty much back in 2017. And so, I've learned a lot about all of this grass situation. I just love it. Okay, so as you can see on the Dristy, there's some highlighted, it's infield only. So if you go to the next slide, the Dristy timeline. So we planted this in 2017 with Rami turf via the blueprints. On May 2024 through June 24, we initiated a weed control, a fertilizer maintenance plan, because if you recall the rec park, there was also an invasive weed that was kind of taking over the perimeter of the rec park, and that was called Bird's Foot Tree Foil, and it was that yellow creepy weed that kind of had made its way through the park. So we had hired a maintenance, an outside service, who also works with the city of Anandale, to come in and help us take control of some of this. So through this, we took care of the Bird's Foot Tree Foil, and we were working on the pinwheel and Dristy. And what had come to light in July is that this invasive fescue had taken over the infield. And part of that is because there is a, the, the cause is potentially that there was, when they went in to do the seeding of Dristy, there was still some seed from the utility fields, which is the athletic tough turf seed grass, which is a tall fescue. And then it was mixed in with the Big Nine mix, and they don't like each other. And the result of that is an invasive fescue. So what we did in July of '24 is we, which was last summer, is the recommendation was to go in and to kill off the infield with Roundup and eliminate the grassy weeds, eliminate the fescue, and to just really start over with germination. And so we did that. And that was then seeded with an Olympic sod blend, and so if you go to the next slide, that talks about how, it's an Olympic sod blend, which is all Kentucky bluegrass. It's literally like the best grass for a baseball field or for sports fields. It's fast establishing, it's strong, it has really great root system, it's tear strength, it's fast recovery, and it's low growing maintenance. So it was the best recommended grass for the situation that we have encountered. And so what we're going to be doing is we're going to be continuing to work through this process. So if you go to the next slide, and then the next one, sorry there, Crystal. Okay, so we have this remediation plan, and we have developed a phased remediation plan to remove the invasive fescue and reestablish a uniform bluegrass playing surface on the Dristy. The remediation plan is built around players playing on it, and we will continue to work through that through the summer. The grass is resilient grass, it's established around playing on, so it is playable. It just may not look awesome right now, but it does look better than what it did. We are going to continue to work on making it a better surface. So I think some of the conversation has been like, oh, you're just done with it. No, we're not done. We're going to continue to work with our maintenance project that we have going on there. He actually, I was in contact with him today. He is coming out here end of the week, which is the 1st of May. As he states in here, he's going to be working on fertilizing it, weed control, pre-emergent, and he's going to be paying attention to that then through the rest of the summer and working around the busy schedule that is on Dristy. Because as we know, it's also not used for athletics, but it's also used for the association in the summertime, so it does receive a lot of wear and tear. So if you go to the next slide, Crystal, all right, thank you. So this is now what Dristy looks like. As you can see, it's coming in very nice, it's got a very pretty green to it, and they were actually scheduled to play on it today, which was exciting to see, but it was rained out, so it gave us another day of grace with the grass. But we've mowed it once, and the plan is to, obviously, we have to mow it because that's going to choke out that fescue that's invasive to that grass. So yeah, so that's where we are with the Dristy ball field. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you just touch on, and we talked about this at our rec park meeting, but is there, I think Jared from Bolton and Mink is going back to, is it Ramy?
Ramy turf.
Ramy turf?
Yeah.
And discuss like how this happened? Is there any financial help we get in this process, or do you have any update?
Yeah, so actually, Tim and I and Kelly Henen Camp, the city administrator, and Joe Holler, and Jared, the project manager for Bolton and Mink, we met earlier last week in regards to this situation. He has been in contact with Rami turf. Rami turf says that they have followed the plan, the blueprint that was established for them, and so I don't know, we have to work through what that's going to look like. You know, we're not only working with the professional that we have hired to help us maintain this, but we also have had a generous group come out from Reinert's Grass, which is located in the cities, and they work with like Northwest University, they work with the U, they work a lot with the Twin City, with like the Twins on their grass. And so actually, he was out last week again and looked at it, and I think it is, it's eight years ago. And so as he said, you know, we were, it was a bad situation that came to life, and now we're taking care of what that situation was. And if we wouldn't have taken care of it, it would continue to look just, it doesn't mesh together. So the best we could do was do what we did with that. So he did also look at all of the other grass kind of around the rec park and said, you know, like that grass is in really good conditions, like the turf grass that we put on the utility fields is great, the maroon looks wonderful, the Dristy outfield looks good, it's just that unfortunately, that infield was just a bad situation, so.
And it's a bad situation that didn't show up right away.
That's correct. It didn't come until, you know, when you talk with the professionals in regards to the grass, it's something where it doesn't come to life like this until like five or six, seven years later, because they assume, right, in grass growing, that it's just going to continue to grow together, when actually, it was invasive to its species, so it was not growing properly the way it was supposed to be. So, any other questions?
From a cost standpoint, is it shared 50/50 between community ed and the city, or is it more complicated than that?
Actually, it is, so it's a joint power, so it's between the city of Anandale and the Anandale Public Schools. So I am just one of, I'm just in charge of the rec park, and so I kind of in the middle person between the city and the school.
Yeah, and just another note on that too, I'm glad you brought that up. The joint powers is made up of a couple of our board members and a couple of the council folks from the city, and Kelly, myself. Tiffany, yeah, Tiffany being in charge of facilities, this is a, she's been willing to take this on, obviously, she's learned a lot about grass, and it's taken her back to her farm grow roots, right, Tiff?
Yeah, totally. I need to get good grass at my house now.
So, yep, expectations are very high now.
Very high at the Groob home.
But thank you for your time, and if you look back, I mean, if you can go back to the, look at this one and then go back and look at the very first picture again, it is coming, and it is too, it is too bad that it took so long for this to show, because right away, the grass did look, it looked very good the first few years that we were using that fieldness. Unfortunately, to Katie's point, it just took some time for, you know, for this, it to take over. So we feel really good about the direction we're heading with it, and yeah, I was going to mention that the joint powers does meet two to three times a year. We like to meet kind of going into the summer season and then have a follow-up after that, after that season's done, so.
Tiffany, one last thing, have they been playing on the field, or have they not had?
Yeah, good question. So they've been practicing on it, but they haven't played on it.
Because of its condition, or just?
Because of the condition. They feel that it isn't suited to be playing on it with athletics, but according to like the professional lawn care maintenance and Reinert's, they feel that it's playable. So they are going to play on it, like I said, they were supposed to play on it tonight, which is great, but they are scheduled to start playing on it this week. And I also want to say, part of it, of them maybe not having played on it too, is because they also wanted to maybe give it a little extra time to take root a little bit here in the spring with that time, so.
I was going to mention that too. It's almost better that they didn't for the last couple of weeks, just to give that grass a little bit more time to kind of take root. And now with rain, and we're going to get some sunshine, and that grass is really going to start turning now, so it's going to just make a big difference the next couple of weeks.
So it might not be a question for you, maybe more like Jared, but does that just mean we've had more away games than we would normally have? Do we know?
Yeah, he did schedule a little bit more away games at the beginning of the season, and now he's going to, now they're scheduled to be more home.
Okay.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
I will move on to 9C, consider approval of recognition of student qualifiers for state competition. And we have a list of students that we want to send a congratulations from the board. So we can send congratulations to the following qualifiers for state robotics, James Holly, Matthew Watson, Varner Jones, Austin Truenow, Elliot Wolf, Lucas Winters, and Jacob Gades. And congratulations to the following qualifiers for state speech, Keely Jacobson in Great Speeches, Michaela Shearer in Informative, Cammy Moon Poetry, Miles Hayes Prose, and Julia Segner Poetry. So we send that congratulations, and once again, if I mispronounced your name, I do apologize.
I had one more thing about robotics, and we've talked about it up there, but as long as we're talking about their team and them going to state, that's on, I believe they're having a, it's this coming weekend, no, next weekend, the following, I think it's on the 10th. And they're going to be at our work session on the 12th and do a little demonstration. That's the plan right now, so.
Motion by Jen. Second by Dylan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 9D, consider approval of the following 25-26 contracts. We have an LD special education teacher at the middle school and a band teacher at the middle school.
Are these new, or are these just replacement positions?
These are positions that, these are not new, no, yeah. They're positions that we've had.
Okay, I would need a motion to approve both contracts. By Jen. Second by Dylan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 9E, consider approval of the 24-25 work assignment. We have one, we have a special ed peer professional at the middle school. This is a replacement position. Motion by Melissa. Second by Jenna. Second by Jenna. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9F, consider approval of the following 25-26 work assignment, which is a special ed paraprofessional at the elementary school. This is for next year, next-
Correct.
Next school year.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jen. Second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9G, consider approval and, and adoption of the April resolution accepting donations. This is our long lengthy list of donations.
Make a motion to approve the donations.
Motion by Jen. Second by Jenna. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9H, consider the third and final reading of the new policy 209 Code of Ethics, and consider approval and adoption. And this is, this is the third time that we're seeing this, this is the Code of Ethics for school board members.
Make a motion to approve Code of Ethics.
Motion by Jen. Second by Dylan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9I, consider approval of the following policies in the review cycle, and there are seven. There's like 413 harassment and violence, along with a reporting form, a mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults, no changes, confidential student maltreatment reporting form, the consent agenda policy, school board meeting minutes policy, and open meetings and closed meetings, and there's either minor changes or no changes to all seven of those policies.
Make a motion to approve all policies.
A motion by Melissa to approve all seven policies.
Second.
Second by Jenna. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, information items. So there is a work session here at the Anandale Elementary School, Monday, May 12th, that's six, and then 10B is our next monthly meeting, is just the following week, Monday, May 19th, at seven, here in the media center. Anything before we go? I need a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
By Jen, second by Melissa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?